Good evening, welcome to Oconee County Borders Commissioner Meeting. Today is Tuesday, February the 7th, 2023. If you're joining us virtually, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom when it's time for public comment. After a moment of silence, we're going to ask Daniel Haygood to lead us in the pledge. Please stand. First item of business fee to approve the agenda, I would like to ask that we add item number 7.4. It's the resolutioning for a quick claim deed and reciprocal easement agreement for the post office property.
I make a motion to approve the agenda with the.
You know, motion second, all in favor? Thank you, motion carries. Next item is for statements and remarks from citizens. This is for anything not on the agenda tonight. Anyone virtually? Thank you. Any statements or remarks from commissioners? You want to announce that we will host a town hall on Tuesday, March 21st, and that'll be at Oconee County Civic Center. You can be there in person or you can watch virtually. Our main focus of the meeting will be to talk about the master plans for Parks and Rec. And 6 o'clock at the Civic Center. Next item is to approve the minutes. This is from our regular meeting on January 3rd and agenda sitting meeting on January 31st.
Make a motion to approve the minutes estimated.
You know, motion second, all in favor? Thank you, motion carries. Now we're going to move into our zoning matters, just a quick rundown on the procedure. The zoning petition shall be presented by the county staff with no time limit. The applicant that signed up wishing to speak for the petition shall be allowed a total of 20 minutes, lest the applicant's reserve a rebuttal. Those signing up to speak against, the petition shall also be allowed 20 minutes. The public comment section will be closed at that point, and the board can ask questions as they find appropriate. And then the board will make a decision as set out in unified development code. With that, we'll call our first item, which is rezoned P 22-0155. This is deferred tax LLC, it's a B1 PUD and B2 to B1 Business and B2. This is 33.65 acres located at 1291 Virgil Langford Road.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Again, this is P 22-0155 Per Tax LLC. This is the aerial photograph of the subject parcels, 45B and 45. Currently, the properties are zoned B2 and B1 in the regional center character area. And again, the request is to rezone the property from B1 PUD and B2 to B1 General Business District and B2 Highway Business District in order to develop three B2 zone lots and eight B1 zone lots for a total of 11 commercial lots to be available for future purchase. This is the concept plan that you have in your application packets, slightly larger version. These are the architectural images submitted with the application. And staff recommends conditional approval with the following conditions, 1, 2, and 3 are standard conditions. Number four, all dumpster enclosures shall be brick or stone and shall be architecturally compatible with the commercial buildings on site. All service and truck loading areas shall be screened from public view by a six-foot wall, masonry wall, with facade material to match the exterior of the principal building. In addition to the required 10-foot wide vehicle use area screening and landscape strip along Mars Hill Road, a 25-foot wide structural buffer shall be provided, including trees as specified in the UDC Section 808-04-B1B and evergreen plant material as specified in UDC Section 808-04-B3D. Number seven, an internal sidewalk network shall connect all uses within the development to sidewalks along Oconee Connector and Mars Hill Road. Pedestrian connectivity shall be provided throughout the development, including raised decorative crosswalks. Final design of the sidewalk network shall be subject to the approval of the planning director and shall be shown on the preliminary plat and site plan, development plans for each phase of development. Number eight, pedestrian facilities shall be provided connecting the development to Hollow Creek Lane. Number nine, all along the full length of the private access drive, private drives to both phases of the development, no sidewalk shall be located within the 10-foot wide landscape strip vehicle use area screening. Number 10, all stormwater management ponds shall be enclosed by black vinyl coated chain link fencing and screened on all sides by a 25-foot wide structural buffer, including trees as specified in the UDC Section 808-04-B1B and evergreen plant material as specified in UDC Section 808-04-B3D. Said buffers shall be in lieu of the required evergreen screening of UDC Section 116-03-B5. 11, at the time of preliminary plat submittal, an updated traffic study shall be submitted to the planning department reflecting all applicable zoning conditions and recommendations of county staff, GDOT, and a third-party review conducted on behalf of the county. Number 12, proposed site driveway number one along Oconee Connector shall be restricted to a right-in, right-out only, and a southbound dedicated right turn lane into the development shall be installed. 13, proposed site driveways number two through four along Mars Hill Road, as described in the traffic study dated 2/11/2022, shall be reduced to one full access entrance and two right-in, right-out entrances as follows. One roundabout shall be installed at Hollow Creek Lane and one right-in, right-out entrance on Lot 1 and one right-in, right-out entrance on Lot 2. The final entrance design shall be subject to the approval of the public works director and shall be shown on the preliminary plat and site development plans for each phase of development. Number 14, the entirety of the project's frontage along Mars Hill Road shall be upgraded to county streets design standards for arterial roads as outlined in UDC Article 10. Road improvements shall be shown on the preliminary plat and site plan for each phase of the development. Number 15, a roundabout shall be installed at the intersection of the two interior private drives between Lot 1 and Lot 8 as shown on the submitted concept plan. Number 16, inter parcel access to adjacent properties shall be required in order to facilitate future access from the development to Virgil Langford Road. Said internal parcel access shall comply with UDC Section 60802 and shall be shown on preliminary site plan and site development plans for Phase 2. And 17, the total building square footage of the development shall not exceed 186,713 square feet. And finally, number 18, the development shall meet all standards of the Mars Hill Overlay District as outlined in UDC Section 20604, unless otherwise approved by special exception variance. The planning commission recommended denial. Additionally, and you have a memo from the county administrator outlining an alternative action to be one with conditions for your consideration in your package. Thank you.
And we're here from the owner or the agent of the owner.
Good evening, David Ellison, on behalf of the applicant. I want to thank you all for y'all's patience and understanding as y'all have gotten on my letters over the past few months. And I hope y'all can understand that I'm here today because of commitments that, that y'all didn't make, but the, that this county made the past 30 years. This Oconee Connector was originally developed by Wendell Dawson based upon the understanding that this property owner would be conveying this, giving this property to the county in exchange for this access. It was understood by the county in 1997, it's understood by GDOT in 1997. 2009, Melvin Davis again confirmed the existence of this agreement for full commercial access. In a letter that he sent to the property owner at the time said, we just need to run it by GDOT, they confirmed the existence of the agreement. Again, in 2021, GDOT has confirmed that they would honor these commitments for full commercial access. And so we asked the county to again honor this commitment for full commercial access. What's unique about this property is that this current zoning truly is unconstitutional. You cannot build on this property because it's a binding site plan that simply does not exist anymore. And this was before the connector, before 316. And so this property cannot be used at all. And so as a result of that, county has the obligation to work with the property owner to obtain the highest and best use of the property. That's what we're asking the county to do here tonight is to work with the property owner to realize the value of this property. If y'all seen in the affidavits that we filed on the record, the county itself has tried to market this property for the exact same use we've been trying to do here today. And so we ask that you please honor those commitments and work with the property owner. You can see, you know, every B2 property in the area has thrived. Put in the record, you see everything around here, this vision was realized. But now, you know, we're finding out today that there's a potential request to downzone this property to B1. Yeah, I didn't have time to present a full objection to this today, but I'm going to object to any downzone to B1 as proposed by the county administrator for a variety of reasons. And one, to the extent that we're trying to downzone to B1, we would have a vested right to B1 as it existed in 1992 when this property was rezoned. A portion of this property is zone B2. And so balancing the public interest versus the right of the property owner, the free and unrestricted use of his property, that balance is unconstitutionally violated by giving away and stripping out that B2, which my client already has. And so we would ask that you please reject, strictly reject this request from the county administrator because it's simply deprives my client of his distinct investment back expectations. And he bought this property based upon these agreements and commitments with the county with GDOT, bought it based upon the zone, based upon the marketing plan that Oconee County put out there years ago. And it's not right and proper for my client to bear the burdens of public development when it should be borne as public as a whole. That's what these conditions are doing for today. And we're asking y'all to work with the property owner and approve our application to rezon under as proposed in our application. And we're asking for full commercial access with the signalized lighting. We have a traffic engineer today who kind of discussed that today. But I'm not going to get into the mechanics of that, but I will get to legalities. I understand there's a concern about public safety, but GDOT does not have that concern. Understand that the county may feel like they can deny this condition, but to do so, the county must first take it and offer just and full compensation. That does not happen. My client does not want just compensation from the county, he wants to build a development at its highest and best use. And so we would ask that you please approve our rezon as submitted to allow full commercial access to have the access that we would like along Mars Hill Road. You know, these, you know, required roundabouts that are four times more expensive than what we are proposing is not rationally related to my client's actual use of public infrastructure. You know, if my client's only providing about 20% of the traffic that's going through these roundabouts, why should he pay the full freight? And to impose a condition as suggested in this memo that would require my client to be responsible for acquiring public right-of-way is an impossible condition. A private property owner does not have the right to exercise the powers of the domain. This is an illegal, impossible condition that we can't, simply cannot satisfy. Another issue we have in this proposed memo is that it will be approved as V1, but then we'd have to come back before we all again to get approved for a site plan and everything else. Well, that violates the zoning procedures law because there's no policies, procedures as to how that be decided. There are no objective standards to determine how, what y'all would consider. That would also violate due process. It would be zoning within a zoning decision, but no clear criteria how to govern the applicant. So that is unlawful. So we would ask that you please approve our rezon as we have submitted. You know, we understand that this is a challenging situation, but you know, that's what the constitution is for. That's here to protect property owners against the government. And I know that's an uncomfortable thing to hear, but this government made commitments long ago. The vision was realized now. And we would ask that you please realize this vision as originally contemplated long ago by allowing my client to reuse this property for its highest and best use and that you please just work with us. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, my name is Abdul, I'm here, I'm a traffic engineer with A&amp;R Engineering. I was asked to do a traffic impact study for this project, I just wanted to briefly present a brief summary. I'm a traffic engineer more than 30 years in metro Atlanta area and owner and president of A&amp;R Engineering. Pleased to be working with the county as your consultant designing the roundabout at the new admin building facility on Highway 15 and Summit Grove Drive as well. I've done two types of studies at this project, one is a traffic impact study and then a signal warrant study that which was recently completed, which documented that a signal is warranted at their proposed main entrance on Openai Connector. I'll just talk briefly about the access points and our recommendations for what I recommended needed to be done to mitigate the impacts from this project. At the, first I'll speak about Oconee Connector main entrance. At the median break, we recommended it be signalized because of the amount of traffic from this development and the number of lanes on Oconee Connector, the amount of traffic. It meets all the criteria by Georgia DOT and state regulations and the county to install a signal there. We also recommended that a right turn lane and a left turn lane be installed on Oconee Connector for traffic entering the project. And then we recommended two exiting lanes be installed for traffic exiting the project at that entrance on Oconee Connector. I, now, given the spacing between this proposed signal and adjacent signals, we recommended that and in a connection be established between this proposed signal and adjacent signals so the corridor signal timing can be done in a manner where the platooning effect will carry the traffic. In other words, if somebody stops on Oconee Connector at Mars Hill Road, they don't have to necessarily stop at this new proposed signal. They can be timed so that they only stop at one location and they can go through three signals at the same time. That's what corridor timing gives us as a result if they're all interconnected and synchronized. So that was one of our recommendations as well. With the above recommendations, the study indicates that the overall intersection operates at a level of service A and B, which is really good for moving traffic on Oconee Connector. There will be, the way you typically time large corridors, there will be wait times for the site traffic, which is what you want, and you can move traffic on Oconee Connector. So overall, Oconee Connector will work at a good level of service. Straight out, 316 in a section on Oconee Connector is currently congested and will operate at level of service F as it does now. However, with the GDOT new interchange improvements, the ramp intersections that will be created will not have conflicts with the heavy through traffic on 316, which is really what's causing the congestion there. So once they're grade separated and ramps are put in place, you will see a lot of relief on the congestion you see at then a section of 316 and Oconee Connector. So that's something that will happen with that project. The distance from the proposed nearest ramp to the median opening that exists is 670 feet approximately. And similarly, the distance from the median opening to Mars Hill Road signal is also 670 feet approximately. This gives an opportunity for a signal timing in a corridor when you have equal spacing, that's what traffic engineers love to see. I think it can be accomplished. Again, our analysis indicates that the traffic operations on this corridor will function satisfactorily if all recommended improvements are implemented with traffic from the median opening not backing up to the ramp. Now I'll discuss a little bit access on Mars Hill Road. Total frontage on, property frontage on Mars Hill Road is 1220 feet, over 1,200 feet. And three proposed, three drivers are proposed on the site plan. The easternmost driveway will be a right-in, right-out driveway with a deceleration lane across from Old Mars Hill Road. The middle driveway across from Hollow Creek Lane is proposed to have a left turn lane and a right turn lane on Mars Hill Road and a stop sign for side streets. Western driveway is proposed to be a full access with left turn and right turn lanes on Mars Hill Road as well. Under the above recommended configuration, the traffic on Mars Hill Road will not have to stop for any of the site traffic. Therefore, the through traffic from neighboring subdivisions and developments will not be impacted due to the site traffic at the site driver locations on Mars Hill Road. Staff recommendations call for a roundabout at the middle driveway. There are challenges with respect to the feasibility of the, of a roundabout, given the grades on the driveway and the right-of-way limitation on the other side of the driveway. The grades on the driveway will become steeper due to the fact that the entire roundabout will have to stay relatively flat and the diameter of the roundabout is typically 120 feet or so. The steeper grades will present a safety issue for trucks exiting the site and stopping on an uphill exit into the roundabout. The level of service F on this driveway per the study for an unsignalized stop sign control is not uncommon for driveways to commercial properties throughout metro Atlanta on thoroughfares like Mars Hill Road. Since we will have adequate side distance in both directions, there will be no safety issue involved. Just the exiting drivers have to wait for a gap in traffic on both sides before they can leave. No delays will be involved for through traffic on Mars Hill Road in this case. However, a roundabout will introduce delays and congestion for traffic on Mars Hill Road. Therefore, in my opinion, a roundabout here will be difficult to build and will have some unintended negative consequences for through traffic on Mars Hill Road. Appreciate the opportunity to present, I'll be happy to answer any questions later.
Thank you. 6:44 left.
All right, thank you. Is this a new podium?
No, you just got taller.
I like it. I'm Ken Bell, Bell &amp; Company, and we prepared the zoning documents that you'll be acting on this evening. Can I get you to pull up just the site plan and keep it on the screen to talk from so that people better understand what I have to say? I want to thank the planning department and a guy for the favorable report that he wrote on the project. The zoning, the future land use map, all those things support this type of plan on this property. And just to refresh your memory, the corner parcel on the front of the property that goes down to the intersection of Mars Hill Road and Oconee Connector is already zoned B2. All we are trying to do is extend that piece of property to go back to that green buffer where the larger building is shown. All of that parking area and therefore is already zoned B2, so we're just slightly expanding the B2 portion of the existing property. And the rest of this property we've redesigned to be a B1 residential subdivision. So this is, if you look down at the right-hand corner, you see this is page two of three. Page one of three just showed the Publix and the two lots and the stormwater detention and access. And the other rest of the lots were just lots because not only do we have to go through a zoning process, but we've got to go through a subdivision process to be able to start developing this property. So before we can get any kind of permits of any kind, we have to go through the zoning process, the site development plan approval process, the subdivision construction process of getting infrastructure and roads and grading of all of the lots and whatnot, and a final plat recorded before the building can ever be built. So there's quite a lengthy process that begins the day the property is zoned. And so I call this page, I think, a year five plan. And pages one and two were basically a two-year plan. And then this sheet was another three-year plan to finish building out on all of the lots. So you're looking at a minimum of five-year plan, best case scenario, to get the project built out. I'm going to really just talk about quite a number of facts. This is not going to be my opinion, but a matter of facts. This is actually one of the zoning documents that the planning department created in 1992, showing the B2 zone as it existed in 1992, and also the site development plan that was proposed to rezone the balance of the property to B1 MPD, which that occurred in 1992, 93. And so our request is, as you already know, to rezone the property from B2 and B1 MPD, MPD to just B2 on the front, as I've already mentioned, and B1 on the rest of the project. So we're not going from raw undeveloped land, we're going from two existing business classifications to two revised business classifications. I actually had this property flown in 1991 before we started working on the rezon plans. And the only drawing that existed about Highway 316 at that time, this predates any discussion about the Oconee Connector, was they showed us where the final version of the route of 316 was going to be located. So that is what this photograph illustrates. There were three versions of 316 before this time. There was a southern version, this version, and a northern version. I want to recall to your attention that narrow width at the time that they proposed Highway 316. Again, this is 1991. In 1992, we submitted the rezon plan for the development of the property. This portion down here, it was already zoned B2 at the time. We rezoned that R1 on this portion and B1 MPD on the rest of it. But again, and the conditions of this where we had to extend this road all the way to the adjoining property and we had to tie to Virgil Langford Road on the other end. After that was done, is when Mr. Dawson started and they started talking about putting the upcoming connector in. Is when Mr. Dawson sent out letters to property owners requesting that they donate the right-of-way. And three days after that letter was written, the property owner responded saying that he would be happy to donate the right-of-way as Mr. Dawson had requested, as long as his terms and conditions could be met. And then those, part of those conditions was access to the Oconee, the Oconee Connector when it was engineered. And the other part of that later became the memorandum of agreement between Oconee County, which defined all of the other access points for the entirety of the property. There was going to be an access point for the residential development, an access point for what is the B1 property and then two other access points on Mars Hill Road for the subject property. So we're not deviating, other than meeting current county requirements, we're not deviating from the locations of any of those access points on this property. If I have any time left, will I, will I have time to rebut or do I have to have some time left?
15 seconds. Now you won't have any time.
Is this 20 minutes for one rezon request or for the two rezon requests?
It's one case for us, so you had 20 minutes.
Are you taking one action?
Yes.
I have some questions for y'all about the, the alternate conditions that were delivered to us today.
Well, that concludes the time for those speaking for. Now we'll go to those speaking against. Jennifer.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Walker. I live at twelve oh one DeAndrea Drive in Watkinsville, just outside the neighborhood adjacent to this property, near the property. As you can see, I got a few slides that I have prepared in response to some of the concerns that I've heard regarding our kind of a self. Oh, thank you. A group of us for Mars Hill for Responsible Development and some concerned citizens of Oconee County that we've had some discussion with. So I want to bring to you some of the concerns that have been brought up to me that I want to relay to y'all. So first of all, the letter that was delivered by Fortson Bentley and Ellison to Dr. to Mr. John Daniel, we wanted to respond that we respectfully do not waive our right, any rights related to this process or the decisions coming from this application, and we do have a substantial interest in this proposal. So our concerns are the same as what's been identified thus far. As far as this signalized intersection on Oconee Connector, so it's already been stated, three consecutive traffic lights on, on this side of three sixteen within a quarter mile, additional light would be, we had read six sixty. It's been referred to six hundred and seventy feet from both the new three sixteen off ramps and Mars Hill intersection. An email, internal email by Georgia Department of Transportation had said this was a substandard design for even an urban development. And then we also have identified Mr. Pat Smeaton's recommendation that the National Cooperative Highway Research Program recommends that direct property access should be denied. And so we feel like that is something to, that we as residents of this area should be noted and identified in regards to the decision for this proposal. And then for the traffic concerns on Mars Hill has been stated already that whether three entrances or two and a roundabout, we still feel like Mars Hill at this point does not support the type of traffic that's been proposed by a Publix grocery store at the size that's been proposed for a B two rezone. This level of traffic is not conducive with a collector road. That is not meant for allowed for truck traffic. Traffic buildup would be negatively impacting residential and we should note future commercial areas, gentlemen. We feel like this type of proposal would impact traffic, not just for the property in a negative manner, but any other interested parties that are wanting to develop on Mars Hill. Now, also regarding Georgia Department of Transportation, we do have concerns for long-term plans. The final G dot plans for the intersection of Oconee Connector in three sixteen and Virgil Langford in three sixteen, those are still largely have not been consolidated. And as Mr. Bell has already shown you, those plans change over time. And so we feel like a responsible decision on this rezone request cannot be made at this time with the reshaping of this, the biggest artery in Oconee County that's still being finalized. And then short term, this has also been proposed by G dot for some period of time that there's going to be a detour that put further pressure on connecting roads in the area through the construction phase beginning in twenty twenty-four. If the project remains the same, that we want to reiterate that that's still in flux. So the convergence of all these moving pieces of this proposal for changing or for rezoning, Georgia Department of Transportation Construction and the issues on Mars Hill Road not being up to par for all of this just compounds the issue that we think is a problem for this area. We do feel like right now everything's properly zoned, given the infrastructure and available geography of the property. We're again referring to the comprehensive plan that requires buffers to protect lower density residential areas within a near, near the character area would be impacted by higher density and commercial development of the character area. And the property we feel is developable and still economically viable as is. The road system is not appropriate for what's being proposed as an upgrade to B two, in our opinion. And with that, gentlemen, I will yield to the next participant.
Wilder Bailey. Ladies and gentlemen, if you'd this is a public hearing, so we don't need any comments or applause or anything like that during press presenters or when we're asking questions. So just remain quiet out there and we appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Bailey.
Well, here I am following Jennifer Walker again, so that's not very smart of me. But my name is Wilder Bailey and I'm, I live in twelve thirty-one day in the drive. I've been in Oconee County about thirty-four years now. And, and while I wasn't fortunate enough to be born here, this is certainly my home and I have a keen interest in in everything that has to do with Oconee County. I love the people. I love the area. Sometimes, sometimes I use golf because I don't, I can't play very well, but golf is something that I, that I love. And, and if I go out and pull a seven iron out of my bag and, and say, I'm going to hit the shot a hundred and fifty yards, three feet from the pin, chances are that may not happen. So I'm not a good candidate to be on PGA Tour. It's pretty obvious and clear. Now, this project of, of using this land for, for the intended purpose that the developer is bringing forward is about as bad as my, my seven iron story. I think it'd be just as easy to, to shoehorn a, a, a small version of, of Atlanta International Airport, whatever it's called over there, into that same area. It just wouldn't fit. In, in, in reality, by the way, there's no need in me covering the, a lot of the areas that from, from the report that was done by Trans Systems. I mean, you guys all have, have all that, don't you? So, but I want to read a couple of things from, from the report. These, these folks have been around since nineteen sixty-six. And apparently the county thinks a lot of them, and so do I, after reading some of their work. Safety, safety is, is, is just a huge part of our world. Every day, people get hurt and killed on the highways and, and traffic, pedestrians, we, we have an area that we have walkers. We have walkers, but we have people walking the road for exercise. And some of those folks are, have toddlers. They have young children. We don't have sidewalks. I don't think you guys are going to build sidewalks for us. And so, so our cut through traffic is, is a concern. And, and we have some real experience with that when the, when the traffic light was, was put over on Mars Hill two, three years ago, we had a lot of, a lot of additional cut through traffic and some, I'm, I'm, I'm sure was as high as like fifty miles an hour. It was just unbelievable. And I don't, and no, I don't want speed breakers. So when a pedestrian gets, gets hit by a car doing twenty miles an hour, they have a certain opportunity to survive and, and, and that sort of thing. When they're hit with a car going forty miles an hour, the opportunity to survive is almost zero. And it's, it's, it's just a part of life. And I don't know who, who comes up with these ideas about how much traffic is going to be added to the area. If you go out to the, to the connector out there at four or five in the afternoon and start counting cars, and I dare you to do that, I don't think you can come up with a good number of how many folks are going to be trying to turn into this property. But our area is already saturated with enough automobiles. It, it, it really can't handle much more. It's, it's a very difficult thing. Another real life example. The traffic light, now the quick trip. If you go down in the morning and afternoon, you can oftentimes, I'm, I'm talking about regularly, you could be sitting and have a green light and, and see a car or two come flying by running a, a, a for sure red light. I doubt that we have enough, enough budget now, you guys know this better than I do, to provide enough police officers, deputies to stop this stuff. It's nonsense. Since the pandemic happened, people are less interested in driving safely on the highway. And I'm surprised. And, and then overall, on, on the backside of this property here, where it suggested that there'll be an entrance way to, to, to this development, there's going to be a flyover over there and, and at some point in time. And, and I don't know, have you guys seen any plans, approved plans for the flyover on either, either one of these major intersections? Is that, may I ask that question?
No, you're welcome to talk. We're not
Okay.
we're listening to what she got to say right now.
So, so I, I don't, I don't think this is, is from looking at, at the plans, I don't think there's any possibility that, that there's enough room on the back end of this property to go out on Virgil Langford after the flyover goes through. I don't think it fits. It just absolutely cannot fit, in my opinion. Crash analysis. The Oconee County, this is from the report. The Oconee County Connector is an important arterial roadway facility, providing mobility and connectivity to Oconee County residents and commuters from, from the report. As detailed in the guidelines and research above, the addition of a full access site driveway intersection so close to S, S star three sixteen and Oconee Connector interchange ramp intersections would negatively affect safety and operational. Again, I know you guys have, have all this stuff. If you look at the, the conclusions, I'll try to sum this up. Smeaton, the vice president of the company, ended his comments on the proposed access to the shopping center for the connector with three conclusions based on the current G dot guidelines, the guidelines from NCHRP, which he says what that is, Earth Publications, the crash history for Oconee Connector and the desire to maintain long-term safe and efficient traffic operation on the Oconee Connector. Oconee County staff feel that it is the best interest of the county and county commuters that a full access intersection not be provided on the Oconee Connector. What, what, what great? That's wonderful. But, and, and I agree with that. But all of a sudden, all that traffic goes up to Mars Hill Road, potentially. Mars Hill Road. Our subdivision, it, it, it has, has, has a deal where I can have a horse. It's zoned, I don't know what the zone is, but I can have a cow or a horse in, in my area. Mars Hill Road was, was in that same light. It's just, it's just not built. They, they want to suggest that, that the, that the, the area that would be impacted by the development would be upgraded to a certain standard that would, that would be applicable for the situation that doesn't deal with all the traffic and all the stuff coming down Mars Hill Road unless they do a reroute of the traffic and, and that's not going to happen. So this whole matter is, is just not workable. It's, it's unfortunate that, that, that the land is sitting where it is. But Oconee County and No County is charged with the responsibility of making whole or making good any investor in, in property. And, and that's, that's, that's the, the simple end of all this. I urge you to turn, to, to put this, this matter to bed and, and make it go away. Thank you very much.
Hip Smith.
Christopher Smith, I have the nickname, so.
Okay.
I've lived at Canyon Creek Subdivision since nineteen eighty-nine, so I've been there for quite a while. I've seen a development going on and a lot of things there, they've talked about things that happened thirty years ago. Well, things changed since thirty years ago. So the plans need to change along with that. So what you're promised to do, if you didn't act on it, then you wait thirty years to do something too bad, is my opinion. With all the other development going in the area between the Costco and that whole movie theater area and all that stuff, the traffic come around, what's coming around Oconee Connector is changing dramatically. I've noticed since Costco put in a huge increase in traffic. It's really difficult sometimes we're pulling in the morning to pull up our subdivision, make a left-hand turn because the traffic on Mars Hill Road is atrocious. And they, you know, to put the light up, it's still hard to make a left-hand turn coming out. There's a hilly road. Any more traffic in that road is going to be extremely detrimental. So keep that in mind. The other thing is, is during the planning commission, every seat in here is full. The hallway is full. They asked, does anybody here want to, to talk for this project? Eh, zero. Nobody wanted to. Multiple people here, everybody that was here was against it. The citizens are saying, we don't want this. You guys are voting with the citizens. Do what they say, please.
Mr. Jenkins.
Thank you. I'm speaking in opposition to this proposed regional retail zoning. In my opinion, good community planning calls for keeping similar functions together and providing appropriate transitions. This petition before you fails in both categories. The area around this site has actually been developed as medical office and institutional, both to the north on Oconee Connector and east on Daniels Bridge Road. Generally, you find medical and institutional offices, not regional retail. The commercial property that is developing along Mars Hill Road north of Butler's Crossing and south of this property has largely been office and institutional. The closest regional retail is three miles away at Butler's Crossing or across the Loop Road at the Epps Bridge Center. Most especially, I point out, there is no fast food restaurant nearby. Regional retail and fast food reference are out of place here. Regional retail would not be a good transition to the adjoining residential area. The property is gateway to one of the premier residential areas in Oconee County. Mars Hill Road and Rocky Branch Road contain solid, substantial neighborhoods plus several large estate homes. The proposed regional business would be a disruption to the appeal of these neighborhoods. I draw attention especially to any proposal for fast food restaurants. Noise from outside speakers would be audible for nearby residents and Mars Hill Road is ill-equipped to handle the backup of cars idling. Renting this intensive zoning would open the entire Mars Hill corridor to similar unattractive, intensive commercial development. All in all, a neighborhood village with no fast food restaurants and lower traffic volumes would be more appropriate for this property. And I ask you please to vote to deny this petition. Thank you for your consideration and thank you each for your service to the community.
Zach Sheffield.
Hi, good evening. I'm Zach Sheffield, eleven fifty-one Founders Lake Drive. Most of my points have already been covered, especially by Jennifer earlier. I did want to bring up, had mentioned a few of these at the planning commission meeting before, but one thing is just that, I guess the primary purpose of this proposed rezone does not fill a public need at all. We do not need another grocery store right there. There are already four within about five miles, or I'm sorry, about a five-minute drive and a Walmart and a Costco. We do not need another grocery store there. Nobody would be going to a grocery store there without passing one that already exists. I would also point out, kind of tying in with the traffic study things, we talked about how the, the, the traffic has changed already remarkably with the opening of the Costco. I will kind of echo the sentiments that Jennifer mentioned before, especially as we see the G dot projects unfolding. Any traffic study that has been done to this point is already hopelessly obsolete if it predated the Costco and it's going to be even more so once work begins on the, on the new interchanges and things. I will, also, I, I didn't catch the gentleman's name, talking about the thirty-year-old agreement and all of that. I, I agree. I think if you arrange a thing thirty years ago, if you had built it thirty years ago, the area would look very differently right now, maybe. You know, the development would have taken that into account instead of moving on without you. I guess basically in, in conclusion here, the, so I, I do agree with one of the things that the petitioner's representative did, did say at the planning commission meeting, which is basically that I don't see how this development works without a fully signaled intersection on Oconee Connector because truck traffic would then have to come out Mars Hill Road. Even more though, I absolutely agree with the county planning staff that there is no way that this development works with a fully signaled intersection there on Oconee Connector. We have too many traffic light there, too many traffic lights there. So from where I'm standing, if it can't work without a traffic light and it for sure can't work with a traffic light, the only reasonable conclusion is that it just won't work. Thank you for your time.
Can't read the first name, last name Cox. Yes, ma'am. Come on in. Yes ma'am, come on up.
My name is Aubrey Cox. From ten twenty Chris Court. Uh, my spouse and I have been residents of Welbrook Farms in Okone County for over four years. When we moved to Athens, we were especially grateful to get away from the terrible traffic conditions where we already had, where we lived. We know that as we age. Driving becomes a challenge and access to various conveniences is, is a big plus. Make no mistake, we like easy access to grocery stores, drugstores and even the Piedmont Regional Health Center. None of what is proposed in, in my view, and I'm new to all this, um, seems to make that better. We already have an easily accessed Publix, a Kroger, a Costco, a Trader Joe's, a Walmart, and I think I'm, probably some others. Grocery stores, all within ten minutes of our house. It's plenty. So this intersection in question is already the most congested I've seen in Athens area. In this particular case, we strongly believe that more is not better and we really oppose development at that site. We just can't visualize how this is possibly going to improve our lives and frankly, it's just going to be a royal pain in the butt for anybody near this development. In addition, and there's a second point that I don't think anybody's touched on that I'd like to make. As a retired wetland biologist, I can tell you what mitigation in projects like this often look like. Despite what an environmental impact statement might ta- tell you, and it ain't pretty. The proposed development does, does have a small wetland that drains directly into Barbara Creek. Now, Barbara Creek is a very special waterway, some parts of it look like a beautiful National Geographic photograph. And it runs right through our neighborhood. Runoff from parking lots and miscellaneous garbage is inevitable when there are heavy rain events like the one we had last month. Now, a few drift fences and a retention pond are rarely sufficient in extreme weather events, which is
Cox, sorry, time's up.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm free.
All right, with that, we'll go ahead and close the public comments, this time this will be the commissioner questioning. I'm gonna start off, I got a couple, I think David, maybe from your letter, a couple clarify. Uh, the first one on November twenty-eight. Alright, so you talked about the first section there where G dot took an additional twelve point nine three two acres, was that a true taking or was that just a purchase?
Well, any purchase would also be a take.
But there, there was money exchanged hands on that transaction.
This is constitutional requirement, so yes.
Okay.
But the, the property owner does not have even, even bargaining power with the government because the government can force a, you know, co- coerc sale.
I understand, I understand they donated to Okone County, but then sold property to DOT, was, is my understanding of reading through the documents.
Under threat condemnation, yes.
Okay. Um, corn lot is the partial C zero one, zero forty-five B at six point eight four acres. It's currently B two with no site plan. That's the current B two they were showing up on, uh, so it's already a B two zone piece of property, just like the other three corners. But yeah, they've had no development on it.
From my understanding, it's part of the stream issue, the only way this project works is to have this type of project where you can have the density. The fund, basically the development to handle the stream. Yeah, mind, we have all the credits, we have all the permits, and unfortunately, that takes a lot of money. In order to do that, you know, you have to develop the entire site. Just that one parcel that's B two in itself cannot be developed due to all the environmental issues concerned with that.
Okay. So I've been through the agreements where the property was donated to Okone County. And that was ratified by the board of commissioners. I don't find any mention of a median cut in any of those documents, were you able to find that?
Well, the contract does not have necessarily be memorialized in a formally written document. A contract can't be memorialized through correspondences, through communications. And it's been consistent for the past thirty years that representatives of the county have had conversations that have been memorialized in writing to confirm the existence of this agreement.
Right, but from the first communication to the last, there were changes in there. All, all I'm saying is what was voted on by this board of commissioners back in ninety-seven did not mention a median cut, they're only talking about access off the connector through curb cuts. Especially specifically at station thirty-seven fifty-six and fifty-three related to this property.
Perhaps it was not required because everyone understood what that meant. All these communications demonstrate that it was, it didn't need to be expressed because everyone was on the same page. And it was difficult now thirty years ago to understand, we weren't parties to those conversations, but we do have these documents that memorialize contemporaneous conversations. You have these letters from G dot, understanding that everyone was on the same page too.
Okay, but when you read, when you read Mr. Shackleford's letters, when it's mentioned in the median cut specifically related to access on the fire station.
Well, that was in relation to the fact that part of the deal was the property owner would be giving an easement across easement to the county as part of that.
Yep.
And so that was part of the, part of the benefit the county got from this property owner. Was that, you know what, we're going to give you part of this easement and oh, by the way, you're going to have access through this median break. I think that's, uh, the letter that's referenced from Mr. Shackleford in nineteen ninety-seven.
Yep. But any, anytime that's mentioned, that's only during, when it's mentioned on the fire station side, the eastern side of the track where it was divided.
I'm sorry, I mean, I, could you repeat that?
Yeah, the reference to a median cut appears to me to only be in reference to the eastern side of the track, specifically for the fire station access.
Not necessarily because you recall the legal description of the, of the deed to the county specifically references, um, that median cut. Okay, so the, the deed from the property owner that gave the connect to the county. And specifically references the median cut this property would obtain the benefit from.
Then in two thousand nine, the letters you're talking about from Chairman Davis that time appears to be there was an attempt to change the location from whatever station to move it closer down to the existing fire station. So it appears to me those letters are referenced to moving it back to the specific point that are, that's documented for access for the fire station. And if the G dot at that time believed there was a full median cut for both sides, they would have installed that as part of the Okone Connector project. Why didn't they?
Well, I think a large part of that is when they had this deal cut out between the county and G dot was that they negotiated away a large part of, uh, basically gave away, uh, the right to access. If you see the deeds, a large strip of the property is now limited access. And instead of enforcing the G dot and the county to exercise their power of eminent domain, said we will give up this right in exchange for the median break at this particular location.
Right. I guess I would, I would just argue the median break was for the eastern side and in two thousand nine when it was installed. It was installed with the intent of what G dot had planned to do that time. In addition, I, I know that project definitely would not have happened without, uh, without the donation, but I think there was, there was some definite economic benefit with additional access that the property owners at that time achieved. Two thousand nine, tract C zero one forty-five B C sold for about nine hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars an acre. Two thousand eighteen, C zero one A R zero zero one sold for over a million dollars an acre. So there was some more benefit besides the median break that we're taking into consideration.
Sir, I would just submit the, that the property owner was entitled to just and adequate compensation. And part of it that was obtaining this full commercial access. And we have correspondences from people who are actually parties to these conversations with the county is part of the record. And I understand that you're sitting here thirty years later, we're not a party to those conversations. Trying to extrapolate, speculate what those conversations were, but we have documents that support our position.
But you have. John, if I could remind the board of one kind of principle of, of law, contracts not spread on the minutes of the board of commissioners, don't bind the board. In order to bind the board, a contract has to be spread on the minutes of the board.
Um, the second part was on talking about access on Mars Hill Road.
Yes.
Um, so right now, there's no left turns into this piece of property and no left turns out.
On Mars Hill Road?
Yes, from this property because there's nothing, there's nothing there. Um, the traffic study submitted shows with no build, the traffic along Mars Hill in that area grow about twelve percent. So, forget what year span, I think that's three or four year span. Um, with with a development, the gross traffic count will go to seventeen thousand seven hundred and eighty-one. So in nineteen ninety-two, when the donations were done and it was zoned the whole track is going to generate seven thousand average daily trips gross. In twenty twenty-one, when they came back, uh, that was denied, there was twenty-one thousand nine hundred and thirty-three gross trips. And now we're down to seventeen seven eighty-one on a smaller track. So when you look at trips per day by acre. You're talking less than a hundred and fifty in ninety-two. You were four sixty-eight in twenty-one, and now it's five hundred and twenty-eight today, uh, with less square footage than you, so three and a half times daily, daily trips based on the consultant. I'm not really sure if some of the stuff we're asking for on improvements could be considered a system improvement versus a project improvement when it's working now, so I just wanted to.
Well, I guess the issue though is that still you're asking the developer to pay the entire freight, pay a hundred percent of the cost for these roundabouts. And you're potentially going to make him exercise powers of eminent domain, which you can't do.
I don't think anybody was expecting that, I will get some comments on that later. I mean, it, it can be done, he will have to give us some more right on his side, I would guess. Typically, that's how it works, um, I don't think we've ever asked anybody to go. There was no intent for us to but encourage him to try to.
Part of the zoning condition, so that's why we're objecting to it.
I agree.
But the issue is that, you know, you know, right now, I mean, it'll be entirely appropriate for, let's say, you know, if this project is contributing twenty percent of traffic through this roundabout. For the property owner to put up twenty percent of the cost of that, that is directly related to the actual increase onto the public system directly related to this project. It would not be.
Where does the twenty percent come from?
I'm just using an, an example, the problem here is that y'all are asking the developer to fund a hundred percent of the cost when he is not a hundred percent of the traffic. That's the issue.
But you're a hundred percent asking for it, I'm not asking for it. I'm not standing up for the commission, so don't tell me that, that what you're asking is a hundred percent. And let me ask you this, because I didn't see it, um, let me ask you a couple questions. If, if we bring more traffic in that area, the county would be open to do that. Not you, but we would. We accept it. Do more flows of traffic call, do you see more accidents? Do you have more vehicles? Generally speaking.
Yeah, I would assume so.
Okay. All right, let me ask you this. If you, if we're talking about the traffic that's going to be on the connect. I saw the report from the gentleman. Nothing was said about Mars Hill, I recall, about numbers. Is that clear?
Yeah, most of the, the, most of the analysis was based upon the connector. Because the issue, I mean, the issue with Mars Hill is not necessarily, I mean, the volume that'll be created, the issue is the fact that you know, what, there's been a lot of complaints about congestion. That seems to be the large complaint about Mars Hill is congestion. And these roundabouts do not advance the public interest because they will be increasing the congestion on Mars.
I'm not talking about how you get in and you get out.
Okay.
What I'm talking about is when they come from Rocky Branch or they come out of the, out of that area, are you going to see more vehicles on Mars Hill Road?
I would submit that any use of the land other than it currently, it's currently used, is going to increase traffic on Mars Hill Road. And under that logic, any sort of use of this property will increase traffic and will then turn harm to safety. The challenge that this commission has is to balance that right versus the unrestricted use of the property. If this is memorialized in the constitution, unstate law.
I appreciate you giving me a lecture in constitution, I really do, I wasn't expecting that tonight, but I do, I do appreciate. But my, my point is, you're, you're, you're proposing a project with a lot more traffic on a two-lane road, which in my opinion is you're putting more vehicles as, as, as it's been stated, it's already congested. Just congested, you got vehicles. Current, let me finish before you get going. And so if, if you've got more vehicles coming in, and they're not going to be just coming in off the connector. It's going to be coming all in there and it's additional vehicle, I'm assuming. They're going to be coming from all over to get into that project. Would there not be more accidents?
Yes, any, any use of this property other than raw land is going to increase the accidents.
That's all.
And if the county is going to take the position that any, that this should be denied solely on that ground, I would submit that this is a take.
So you're telling me I should not worry about my granddaughter who lives over in that area and her mama going to school?
What I'm saying is that.
Are you telling me not to worry about my citizen?
Absolutely not.
Your citizens, they're mine.
I live here too.
Well, then I worry about you traveling, you know, but I'd certainly worry about my daughter and her two kids. She lives over in that area and so they are citizens and I don't want them to get hurt.
Me neither, but is it the county's position that nothing should be on that property?
I didn't say that.
Well, what point is the balance?
I'm dealing with what you were proposing. That's what I have to vote on, not something else that I haven't seen.
The problem is right now, this property cannot be used at all because it's bound to a site plan that doesn't exist anymore. Nothing can happen on this property because of the zoning, that is the unconstitutional zoning this property has existed here today.
That's all. That's all.
Any other questions? A question would be for Daniel on the the memo related to the providing right-of-way. Do we need to make any changes to that or is that typically understood?
Yeah. I, I can clarify my memo, I'll clarify.
Okay.
The, uh, no, I, I actually agree with, um, Mr. Allison on this one, uh, under fourteen, the revision to staff condition, uh, as an addendum, all road improvements including design. Right-of-way acquisition and construction shall be responsible, the owner shall be completed prior to issuing the first building permit. Uh, I would strike as an amendment to that, the right-of-way acquisition. Um, that's covered under existing item three, which requires donation of right-of-way for the owner, should, should this be approved? Consider that the officially amended memo recommendation.
You have any?
Let me just add about project improvements and system improvements. When a project improvement is located, when an improvement is located immediately adjacent to a project, to, to a project. Even if it benefits the overall traffic flow, it can still be a project improvement because you wouldn't need that but for the project that was being built. Otherwise, everything would always be a system improvement. Right? Because it would benefit the rest of it, so if you've got a new project coming in, it's adding to a condition, it's changing the condition, which clearly almost any project does. And you require an improvement at the project to deal with those things, that's a project improvement legally. System improvement would be if half a mile down the road, you said, we need a roundabout down here because of what this project's doing. Now, it can be a little more nuanced than that, of course, but generally speaking, project improvements are the things that are necessitated by the project located adjacent to the project.
All right, we'll entertain a motion at this time.
I'll make a motion to deny rezon P twenty-two dash zero one five five, the deferred tax LLC, B one P, the general business district, planning development. And B two highway business district, B one. And B two highway business district, B one general business district, and B two highway business district, plus or minus thirty-three point six five seven acres. Twelve ninety-one virtual length of good.
Second.
You have a motion in a second to deny rezon request P twenty-two dash zero one five-five. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Do I do anything now? Does anybody wish to make any action on the memo from staff? Nope. Go ahead. Ladies and gentlemen, we still have some additional business. If you would step outside away from the doors, please. Yeah, there's no, nothing to it. We were asking about. Fourteen. Yep. Wow. All right. Next time is appointment of the Hard Labor Creek Reservoir Management Board alternate. As now we did have, um, Tim Durham, he was our, uh, water resources director as our alternate. He's no longer with us. So as would be accustomed, we'd love, would recommend appointing Adam Layfield as he is the interim director. Of that facility to be our alternate on Hard Labor Creek Management Board.
I'll make that motion.
Second, second.
And we have motion second on the paper.
Aye.
Thank you. Melissa, second quarter update. Sorry, nobody wanted to stay.
They wanted to go.
Oh, we got some people. There we go in the back. All right. Thank y'all.
They're watching from the comfort of their homes. Um, good evening. Thank you. Um, I am here to present the financial update, um, for the. Quarter's right, the second quarter of FY twenty-three. Uh, so this is through December thirty-first. Um, I would like to, um, give you an update on. Got it. Um, some of the major funds, revenues and expenditures, um, of the county, so including the general fund. Um, capital project information, uh, sales tax revenues and, um, water resources revenue and expenditures. So we'll start first with the general fund, um, second quarter revenues. Um, they're presenting here the amended budget as of twelve thirty-one at thirty-seven point nine million. With the revenues collected at twenty-six point four million dollars, uh, so sixty-nine point seventy-three percent collected. Um, which, uh, is what I would anticipate to see for second quarter. So to look at that in a little bit more detail, uh, we have the categories of our major revenue streams presented for you. And so if you look at, uh, top to bottom taxes, sixty-nine percent collected, so that includes. Real property taxes and insurance premium taxes. Uh, one thing to note about those two items is that they're collected annually, so their collections aren't spread out over a monthly basis throughout the year. Um, so at mid-year point, you would expect to see approximately fifty percent collected. This does exceed that, and so it's for that reason that it does. Um, also the case for, uh, intergovernmental funds at one hundred and two percent collected. Uh, those are grant funds that the county receives, so includes only funds from, uh, the state of Georgia. Uh, one-time collections for those each year as well. Um, all the, uh, most of the other categories contain monthly revenue collections, um, which those are where we would anticipate seeing those. Um, other financing percent collected at ninety-eight percent. Uh, that contains sale of assets. So we have, uh, vehicle disposals that were authorized earlier in the fiscal year. Um, and anticipating another round of vehicle disposals in the current fiscal year as well. And investment income collections are a direct result of the change in market interest rates that were unanticipated at the time we built the budget. So moving on to expenditures from the general fund, you see, uh, budgeted of forty-one point nine million. Um, again, that budget is amended and does include any amendments authorized directly by the board and also multi-year project approvals as well. Uh, that budget is different than the revenue figure, um, by three point nine million dollars, which represents that we're using prior year revenues to cover some of these multi-year projects. Uh, so that's something, um, that we would use from assigned fund balance from previous years as an example. And those expenditures totaling sixteen point six as of December thirty-first are thirty-nine point seventy-nine percent spent. And we look at those based on the department that they've been spent from. So most of the departments are hovering around that fifty percent mark. Um, ones that are less, for instance, the, uh, district attorney's budget, um, is one that is less. Is because there is an annual payout included in that budget that is paid out closer towards the end of the fiscal year and not on the front end of the fiscal year. You'll also see that here with the joint governmental programs, large annual payouts loaded into the front of the year. Um, for allocations to joint government. You also see some items that are less than that fifty percent mark, and those are typically the departments that have some of those larger projects in them. That are still pending completion and moving forward. So to look at a couple of those items and kind of give you an explanation, um, starting with public works at twenty-eight percent spent. Uh, this budget does include paving, which would typically happen in the spring. So as we move into the third and fourth quarters, we would anticipate those, uh, percentage spent to be closer to the budgeted numbers. Operations includes the purchasing of our fleet vehicles and some costs of the administrative services building that have not been spent at this time. Public safety includes support of E nine one-one services, and that's an annual allocation done towards the end of the fiscal year. As community development also supports special facilities buildings, and that also is done closer to the end of the year. Community development also includes some of our larger debt service payments. And of those, um, principal and interest payments, the principal portions aren't due until after the second quarter as well. So all of that to say, while we still look under fifty percent at half of the year. I believe that these budgets are good numbers and that we are leading towards staying within those budgeted figures and don't foresee any, any issues. The update on some of our capital projects that are completed or in process. Um, we are catching up on some FY twenty-two items that have been ordered and weren't received until later. Um, while we still do see some longer lead times. Um, hydraulic trailer has been received from prior year's budget. Uh, Parks and Recreation has received their budgeted equipment. Uh, jail fire panel has been completed and the Frank Norris building renovation is also completed. As well as the Herman C. Michael multi-use courts. And still in process are IT hardware upgrades, the administrative services building. Highway fifteen and four forty-one roundabout. Um, and there is a design in process for Hog Mountain Pats. Uh, vehicles specifically are also under those capital expenditures. Um, this information is current as of today, so while the vehicle spending were, uh, not in the expenditures. As of today, we have received all of the vehicles that were budgeted for, uh, from last year and in this year, uh, within the last two weeks. Um, so that is a positive note. Our local option sales tax distributions, um, this is the fourth quarter collections in comparison with prior year. So we see an increase of fifteen point two five percent and fifty-six percent currently collected towards budget. And we have the same information for special purpose, uh, local option sales tax. An increase of fourteen point five six percent over prior year with eighty-nine percent collected towards budget. Um, and just as a reminder, this, uh, SPOSS fund is budgeted based on what we anticipate spending. So this is just an indication that we have collected eighty-nine percent of what we planned to spend in this current fiscal year. And SPOSS projects, um, include these items listed here. These are from the two thousand and fifteen SPOSS referendum and the two thousand and twenty-one referendum. Which are the only two SPOSS we have remaining that have funding available. Completed project for this fiscal year includes law enforcement vehicles purchased from SPOSS. And currently in process, we have the courthouse, um, final phase of the HVAC system replacement. Uh, fiber line running from the courthouse to the administrative building. Uh, water and sewer infrastructure, um, SPOSS is contributing towards the Cause Creek plant upgrade. Uh, we have file fire rescue vehicle that's been on order for quite some time. That's expected to come in the spring of two thousand and twenty-three. Uh, along with, uh, fire equipment that's remaining, uh, this current year's budget. And the Okony Veterans Park HVAC system replacement, uh, in process as well. And looking at our water resources department, um, as our enterprise fund, uh, revenue is at sixteen point three million. And collections of revenues at forty-eight point four eight percent of that budget. Um, they are right where I would expect to see them. Their expenditures, um, are at an amended budget amount of thirty-nine point eight million. Which does contain, um, budget amendments for large capital purchases, um, for cause create plant upgrade. Uh, so their expenses spent today at six point six million are only sixteen point six seven percent expended. So I do want to show you kind of the operational budget compared to their expenses. So that you don't have all of the capital projects included in those numbers. So looking at it from this perspective, they are following their budget. Um, spending what's budgeted for, and they appear to be on target for the year as well. And these are the capital projects that are currently being funded. Uh, Cause Creek plant upgrade is in process. So that's phase two. Phase three is the transmission line, which is in planning phases. Meta Spring Sewer Extension is in process as well as the Daniel's Bridge Force Main in process. Um, we do have, um, Daniel's Bridge Lift Station Expansion and Doughty Road Sewer Extension that are in the initial planning phases. Um, their vehicles are in process of being procured and they did receive a mower replacement. That was related to, uh, an equipment repair that was needed. The funding source for all these capital projects come from various locations, including their capacity fees, SPOSS renewal and extension funds. Um, some of that, which is from fund balance and as well as the Jeep loan that was recently. So that is an overall update on the second quarter of the county. Um, everything is strong in my opinion, and I don't. At this time have any, um, unfortunate news to give you, uh, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Yes.
Just for the record, uh, the chair, remind me the start date for the T squad.
Uh, collections will start April first.
This year.
So we'll get our first check in May.
Get our first check?
May.
May. And just, just for my education. How are businesses notified about it? Do we go knock on doors or this revenue department?
Department of Revenue issues a notice, but, um, Melissa also sent out notices and some of those started arriving today, actually.
Okay.
So to all the businesses that have license, they received a letter from, from Melissa. Plus Department of Revenue will also post it on their website and change the documents.
So, so starting, uh, April one.
Yes.
Okay.
So actually they'll change it on their system. So even if you don't collect it, you'll have to pay it. Uh, so it's good incentive to watch it. Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Okay, next time it's consider and approve a memorandum of agreement with, uh, Georgia Department of Transportation for additional preliminary engineering of roundabouts.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. This is a memorandum of agreement with GDOT regarding additional, um. Uh, funds for, for oversight of the roundabouts. This was previously handled as a, it's just a staff letter. Um, they're insisting on a roundabout, um, MOA right now. The actual budget about is, is. Included within the mid-year adjustment, which is on consent agenda. Um, but this is, um, so we could proceed with the Snow's Mill and Race Church Roundabout Projects. So GDOT, can you continue their oversight? Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions on this?
Just for information, what's the timeline now? It's moving around or there's still. Are you willing to have a ribbon cut, Dave said?
Well.
Not on a federal project.
I'm trying, I'm trying, I'm trying to keep.
He's trying to keep me calm. This has been one of the worst experiences as chairman not being involved.
They've been out doing like, um, environmental surveys.
Oh, yeah, that's just about all complete. So where they are right now is they are finalizing the right of way documents. Um, that should be done within the month. One is tracking ahead of the other.
And that's to determine what needs to be taken, if any.
That's, that's correct. And so we're, we're ping ponging back and forth within the monolith that is GDOT. Uh, which, which is requiring an MOA to proceed with it. So, uh, yes, it's still tracking according to the initial timetable, but it is laborious.
I object to the original timetable, but they're bound and determined to stay on the original time. So. All right, uh, we have a motion for that.
Yeah, I'll make a motion. We approve the, uh, the memorandum with GDOT for additional preliminary engineering. Does it have to be a not to exceed sixty-eight grand? No, okay, just prove it.
Sir.
Here we have a motion second to approve. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Next time it's approved the alcohol license request for Golden Pantry.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Chair, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Golden Pantry number thirty-four has made application for a new alcohol license for retail package sales of beer and wine. The registered agent, Mr. Garrett Crumpton, has completed his RAS training. Golden Pantry number thirty-four is the one at Butler's Crossing at ten-ten Marshall Road, Watkinsville. Um, the application is complete, so we request approval of this new license.
I'll make a motion for it, please.
We have a motion second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Next time is, uh, the post office documents, Daniel?
Yes, um, I asked for an approval resolution that I prepared. Um, I'll review it very briefly. Um, county and the authority have cooperatively provided the Watkinsville Post Office. Uh, pursuant to the lease from the authority in the post office, county and authority believe it's proper and a public benefit for the post office property. To be owned by a taxpaying business, the authorities entered into a suitable sales agreement. Compensating that result with an experienced owner of postal facilities. Therefore, to, to facilitate the conveyance, the board approves the. Declaration of reciprocal easements, which is necessary because we have four properties that share utilities. Uh, electricity, telephone, water, sewer, uh, and drainage. So we've got all that accommodated in the declaration of reciprocal easements. Uh, and also approving a quick loan deed for the chair to, chair and the clerk to sign. Delivering the post, post office property to the authority so that they can convey it pursuant to their contract. Just a motion to approve.
Any questions?
I make a motion. No, I got a question.
I got. Okay. Does this include the interparcial access?
Um. No. It includes interparcial access at the location. Uh, everybody uses that driveway. The reason it doesn't is because it would require the U.S. Post Office to approve it. And that apparently would delay us for a long. Good drive. Make the motion to approve resolution is submitted and, and for the, uh, chairman to sign the quick loan deed.
Second.
A motion second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Does any commissioner wish any item to come off the consent agenda? Can we entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent items as presented second.
We have a motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. We do not have data executive session, so Commissioner Sax.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
We are adjourned.